...scheduled board meeting for the Brookfield Board of Education. So will you please join me in saying the pledge?
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some guests who will be singing the Star Spangled Banner as well as a few samples from our upcoming holiday concert for band and chorus. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm John Lomondola, proud choir director at Brookfield High School. My 19th year at Brookfield High School. We are here tonight, the Brookfield Chamber Choir and members of the Brookfield High School Band, under the direction of my wonderful colleague, Mr. St. George. We are here to promote our concert, Winter Concert, combined departmental concert next Tuesday night. No, two Tuesdays, the 16th, December 16th at 7:00. So we're hoping that all join us. For that, we're going to give you a sample of Carol. It's here. See you on the 16th. And now, my part.
Thanks, Mr. Lomondola. So this is our jazz ensemble. Mercado for Life is our informal name, but we have merch, so you can buy that stuff later. Again, as Mr. Lomondola said, I'm Steve St. George. I'm happy to be the band director here. I don't have quite as many years in Brookfield, but I'm gaining at 12, so we'll be here forever when it's all said and done. So we'll see you on the 16th. Here's a sample from our instrumental portion of the concert called "Up on the Housetop." It's going to feature Hunter Park on alto sax and Socket Madonna on alto sax. Here we go.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
That is a great way to start our meeting and a wonderful welcome. So I would just like to clarify that I would like to welcome our newly-elected board member, Caroline Cowles. Welcome. That was for you.
[laughing].
And I'd like to congratulate, and it's funny because I never say your last names, so Sarah Devine, Joy Greenstein. Steen, I'm sorry.
Erin. Erin Scalera.
Oh, you are correct. This is a typo, Erin Scalera. Thank you. Erin, welcome back. Joy, welcome back. Sarah, thanks for being here. Okay. The first order of business, we clearly need a chairperson. So it is traditional that every two years after the election of the Board of Education members, the superintendent is charged with calling the meeting to order and overseeing the procedural process of appointing a chairperson for the Board of Education. Once the chairperson is appointed, then the rest of the meeting is transferred over to that person and the agenda will be executed with the remainder of the elections and the items listed on the agenda. So at this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for the position of Chair of the Brookfield Board of Education.
I nominate Rob Fischetto as Chair of the Board of Ed.
First, I'd like to open the floor, though. Is there a motion to open the floor?
I move that we open the floor for nominations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, in favor.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Nominations for the Chair of Board.
I nominate Rob Fischetto as Chair.
Are there any other nominations for Chair?
I nominate Joy Greenstein.
Okay. Any other nominations for Chair?
I second Rob.
Yeah, they need to be seconded.
They will. Yep. Any other nominations? Okay. Is there a second for Rob?
I'll second Rob.
Is there a second for Joy?
I'll second Joy.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. Hearing no more nominations, I will motion to close the floor for nominations for the Chairman of the Board of Education. All those in favor of closing the floor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so I will do this by roll call and tally. For the record, although is all those in favor of Rob Fischetto as chairperson, please raise your hand and state your name, and I will call on you to verify. So as I record it, Stephanie Sikora?
Aye.
Wendy Youngblood?
Aye.
Caroline Cowles?
I will.
Mr. Rob Fischetto?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any opposed, Rob Fischetto? Okay. Any abstentions? All those in favor of Joy Greenstein, please raise your hand and state your name with an aye. Joy? Are you an aye?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Okay. With a count of one, two, three, four, by a show of hands and an aye vote of four, Rob Fischetto has been elected as the new Chairperson of the Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Could you hand this down to Rob, please? Here comes the agenda.
All right, here's the tally, if you'd like it, for Chair and Vice, for the Vice Chair and the Secretary position. And then we'll just give those to the board.
Thank you. Am I sounding something?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think so, not yet. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you very much. Looking forward to this adventure, I really am, moving things forward. So now I believe we can open the floor for Vice Chair. And is that accurate? Let me apologize in advance, everyone, for the mistakes I'm going to make, but I'll get them right, don't worry, at least by the second meeting. We'd like to open the floor for Vice Chairman, and I'd like to make a motion to open the Chair for Vice Chairman, and I would like to, am I allowed to make a recommendation?
Do we have to vote to open the floor?
If to vote to open the floor.
Make a motion to open the floor for Vice Chair. All in favor, say aye.
I second.
Erin, aye.
Aye.
I second. I don't see a second.
Thank you.
Okay, Erin, seconded. And then, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Well, I'd like to open the floor. I'll open the nominations for Stephanie for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Sarah Devine for Vice Chair.
Do we have any seconds? Any other nominations? Okay. So with that, I believe we close the floor. Are all in favor?
Close the floor.
All in favor, close the floor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So I believe we take the vote now.
No, we call for seconds. Are there seconds?
I'm sorry, my apologies.
That's okay.
We call any seconds on the nominations?
I second the nomination for Stephanie.
I second for Sarah.
Anyone else? Okay. We close the floor for seconds and move on. All right. So we take a vote, all in favor of Stephanie for Vice Chair?
And these need to be individual and then recorded for public.
Individual? So start just like you did with Mark. So start with Stephanie?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye for Stephanie.
Okay. Caroline?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. So with that, we close the floor and we move forward to Stephanie as Vice Chair. All right.
Congratulations.
Just make sure you have the names recorded, because that has to be on the media minutes.
I got it. Appreciate that. And, all right.
Yep, same thing for.
All right. See if I can miss this one. All right. I'd like to open the floor for recommendations for the motion of, excuse me, open the floor for nominations for Officer, the Office of Secretary of the Brookfield Board of Education.
Second.
I'm sorry, was there a name?
No.
No, no, we're just opening the floor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yes, aye.
All right. All right. With that, the, I would like to nominate Erin, Secretary of Brookfield Board of Education.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Caroline.
Okay. All nominations in? Any other nominations? Okay. So with that, close the floor for nominations. I'm sorry.
Yep, and so now we need to.
All in favor of closing the floor for nominations?
Aye.
All right. I'll start with you, Stephanie, for Erin for Secretary of the.
No, we need to second them. That's all right.
It's a weird process.
Anybody second? It's all right, I'll get it. Anybody second? We already have a second for Erin. Yes, we do, we have a second for Erin. A second for Caroline?
I'll second Caroline.
Okay. All right. Now I can open up the floor, right? All right. Stephanie? For nomination of Secretary of Chair for Erin. Joy?
Aye. Joy.
Aye. Sarah?
Aye.
Aye. Rob?
Aye.
Can I, wait, can I go on record, I would like to vote aye, because I want to support your vision as Chair, Rob, although I think both of you would make an excellent secretary.
Agreed.
I feel like that was your nomination, I'd like to support you on that.
All right, cool. Thank you. All right. With that, I go to Carolyn. Votes for Carolyn for Secretary.
Aye.
Wendy?
Mm-hmm.
And Caroline?
Yep.
Erin?
Aye.
I know. I know, I know. All right, so with that, we have, I vote to close the floor for nominations and close the floor. Congratulations on Secretary.
It's a lot. It's a lot of spinning.
It's confusing for us, as it were.
You're in charge of documenting all my mistakes and then feeding me, filling me in afterwards, I appreciate it. All right. So moving right along, we look at, we have public comment, Mark Moorash. And with that, Board of Education welcomes all public comment. Each speaker shall have up to three minutes to provide input to the Board at the start of each regular meeting. A maximum of 20 minutes is allotted for commitment on any item, including the agenda for that meeting. At the end of each regular meeting, time is allotted for comment on any item which is within the Board's jurisdiction, which should also include overflow time for individuals who are not able to speak in the initial 20-minute time slot. Discussion with school personnel and individualized students or of individual members of the Board is prohibited. Mark. Good evening.
Good evening, Mark Moorash, 25 Mist Hill Drive, Brookfield, Connecticut. And just before you start my timer, last meeting, somebody spoke six or seven minutes before you stopped them. I'm only going to be about 20 seconds over, but I hope you'll give me the same grace. And really, I just told my kids I was going to say six, seven in front of the Board, and they told me there's no way I would do it.
No worries.
I'm going to speak to Item 9 again in 5144, Student Discipline, that makes a walkout from or sit-in within a classroom or school building or school grounds punishable by suspension or expulsion. At the policy meeting of November 19th, Board Member Sikora stated that she spoke with Principal Blanda, who said that as long as the students get permission for their sit-in or walkout, there would be no problem. Okay, so why not just codify it into the policy? Because what if? What if they wanted to walk out against Principal Blanda? Would he still be so willing? What if they wanted to walk out on a Monday morning when there is no heat in the building to start the day? A school that no longer gives the kids the ability to walk out is no longer a school, but a prison. So codify it. Vote this policy down tonight and fix it. Have conversations about it. You're aware of how this went down on Monday, right? At 7:37 AM on Monday, our kids received an email, "Good morning, there is an issue with the clogged oil filter, which has now been resolved, the heat is on, it will just take some time to get the building up to temperature." This doesn't seem likely, one oil filter, we do have multiple working boilers, don't we? Or are we only running one functional boiler? Are we hiding yet another failing facilities issue from the public? It's early in the season, there should have been maintenance, so we do regular maintenance, don't we? I mean, I'll submit a FOIA, and if you don't like the fact that there's an avalanche of FOIAs coming in, there's a simple solution, don't hide things. Don't hide things. Don't hide things by not even bothering to message the parents that there was no heat on Monday morning, or to not message our kids until after they got to school so they could, oh my goodness, bring a jacket to a school where it was 55 degrees most of the day. Parents weren't told. Why? You wonder why parents are vocal about wanting their kids to have access to devices with which they can communicate with the outside world? There are parents probably watching this right now who probably have no idea that this happened, because our kids have normalized being treated like they don't matter, that there's no sense in speaking up, because they'll be ignored. Another new suspendable offense in 5144 is Number 37, using computer systems, including email, to engage in any conduct prohibited by this policy. And at the end of Mr. Blanda's email, there's a confidentiality notice that says any unauthorized disclosure, distribution, or forwarding of this message or its attachments are prohibited. If you put those two things together, this sounds like our kids could be suspended for sharing that email about there being no heat. But we would never. Never? Then codify it. Codify the nevers and won'ts, and you have my word, because the actions don't line up with the words. This town doesn't trust the administration as it is, and that's something that anybody applying for the new superintendent position needs to hear. So codify it. Because why is this Board so scared of writing and amending policy? Because on page eight of the minutes from the policy meeting, as previously discussed, the Board will no longer review or approve regulations. But you're being gaslighted, because it goes against your own policy in your policy handbook, where in the policy and regulations start-to-finish document, it says that a policy or regulation, the draft goes through policy committee and then to the full Board. The superintendent telling you that you can have a regulation that doesn't go to the Board violates your own policy.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Moorash.
Our kids deserve better than an administration continuing the secrecy and silence that has gone on for far too long.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. We don't have any more for public comments, so on that we'll be over to written correspondence.
So I'll go ahead, Erin. I'm tired of preparing for the meeting, unless you want to.
Thank you.
Do you mind?
No, 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 that's fine. No, you have to take over right now.
I have to come through anyways.
Totally fine. The written correspondence, the following people have emailed the Board since the November 19th meeting. Andy Correa, three emails. Irene Correa, three emails. Matt Grimes. Deborah Kase. And Ryan Reddenis.
All right. All right. On that, move to the written, excuse me, approval of Board minutes.
Erin, are you comfortable taking over the motions this meeting, or do you want me to continue them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, do you want to do it?
Do you mind continuing for this meeting?
No, I don't mind. If you're, yeah, that's fine. I move that the Board approve the minutes listed below as recommended. Regular meeting, 11:19:25, and special meeting, 11:25:25.
Any discussion on that, anyone? No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any ayes? It's unanimous. All right. On that, we have superintendent's update. Please, thank you.
Good evening. My update this evening will be brief. Traditionally, this is a meeting of celebration and joy to recognize our new members of the Executive Board and to celebrate those who are exiting their role. And I know that, you know, Rosa has already left the Board, and Wendy will remain on the Board, but certainly not in an executive role. And Wendy, we appreciate everything that you have offered this Board. Again, I've said it before, but having been married to a Board Chair for many years, it is a difficult role. Heavy as the crown, thank you for wearing it. Thank you for wearing it, Wendy, and welcome.
Thank you.
Just briefly, next meeting, we will be presenting our budget to the Board and to the public. It will be a PowerPoint structure that you are used to, and the format will be very similar, where we will present a broad overview and ask you to start to generate questions to us that we can compile. So certainly, I don't expect you to have a lot of questions the first night. It is really a first look, and then you will start to send them, and then Casey and I will develop a document, a growing document, where we compile all of the answers and everybody can see everything that's asked and everything that's answered. So that will be very exciting for us. I did want to touch on two other topics. I wanted to touch on the weather, before Emily does, and I wanted to touch on the all-hazards plan, so I know that came up last time. So we did a little bit of research, quite a bit of research, and how this has been managed at the district level, it's been managed in the same way and appropriately for the last several years. Per the DEMHS Region 5 Coordinator and our legal advisor, we confirmed our process. This plan does require several signatures, one of which is the Board Chair. That is common practice. The plan is developed by the buildings and the district, not the Board of Education. The plan is confidential, and the public is not permitted to view or access it. It should not be available for the public. If it were, we would be compromised. So I just wanted to clarify that. In terms of the weather, we did have our first little tussle with the weather, and I just want to extend gratitude to the team who assisted in ensuring that the day of teaching and learning accord. I want to share how the decisions are made. So Mike Hicks, the Brookfield Highway Department Supervisor, was delightful. He's delightful late at night, he's delightful at 4:20 in the morning. I have not always encountered that, so that is a wonderful, really, sign of gratitude for your district, that's a great thing to have. So I start communicating with the mic the night before, we talked the morning of a couple of times. I joined a conference call at 4:30 with the local superintendents in this area and our weather advisor. I then reconnect with Mike Hicks to confirm, and then I communicate with our central office leads, we are all chatting very early. Lisa, I'm Gramling, Casey, Debbie, and Dan, and Eric, and that pulls the chain of media, buses, food services, custodians, you know, who take care of the sidewalks and things like that. Then we ongoing monitor during the day for any afternoon activities and events and/or early dismissals. And the night before we reopen, I do then reconfirm with Mike, and Casey reconfirms with the custodians, and we check again in the morning to make sure that there's no ice. So there's very little sleep and a lot of checking, because our priorities are safety and learning. We do our best to make informed decisions, and I know that not everybody appreciates or agrees with the decision, and that's okay. So I did just want to share that with you. That is my report.
Thank you.
I have a question. Vonda, because you said you collaborate with other superintendents. Milford closed, so.
They did.
Did you confirm with, confer with?
She was on the call. Gave no inkling. Nobody else? Yeah.
Do they give any thoughts, because there's a substantial amount of seniors that leave early, and that was really when it was really.
We were recommended to not even consider closing early, because that was in the thick of it.
No, I'm not saying closing early, but consideration for students that leave in the middle of the day, where we have a lot of seniors that leave early.
Correct. The, I mean, the considerations are, we make a district call, we worry about safety, there are definitely options for, for students who drive, right? I mean, students who drive, they.
I just think, don't know if a 17-year-old or 18-year-old will have the capacity to make that decision if they're not out there, right?
Right, but I mean, a parent would obviously be helping make that decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of parents don't, wouldn't know, really, have that information if the roads are treacherous, too, I would think. Just some thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. With that, superintendent's search update.
So school leadership has presented the search committee with several prescreened candidates for interviews, and the search committee will begin interviews this month, and they will continue through January due to the holidays, we're having to break them up a little bit. Caroline Coles has officially joined the search committee as of last week, and Rosa Fernandez has left the committee. Other than that, the updated schedule has been put on the website.
When there is no heat in the building to start the day. A school that no longer gives the kids the ability to walk out is no longer a school, but a prison. So codify it. Vote this policy down tonight and fix it. Have conversations about it. You're aware of how this went down on Monday, right? At 7:37 a.m. on Monday, our kids received an email. Good morning, there is an issue with the clogged oil filter, which has now been resolved. The heat is on. It will just take some time to get the building up to temperature. This doesn't seem likely, one oil filter. We do have multiple working boilers, don't we? Or are we only running one functional boiler? Are we hiding yet another failing facilities issue from the public? It's early in the season, there should have been maintenance. So, we do regular maintenance, don't we? I mean, I'll submit a FOIA, and if you don't like the fact that there's an avalanche of FOIAs coming in, there's a simple solution. Don't hide things. Don't hide things. Don't hide things by not even bothering to message the parents that there was no heat on Monday morning. Or to not message our kids until after they got to school so they could, oh my goodness, bring a jacket to a school where it was 55 degrees most of the day. Parents weren't told. Why? You wonder why parents are vocal about wanting their kids to have access to devices with which they can communicate with the outside world? There are parents probably watching this right now who probably have no idea that this happened because our kids have normalized being treated like they don't matter. That there's no sense in speaking up because they'll be ignored. Another new suspendable offense in 5144 is number 37. Using computer systems, including email, to engage in any conduct prohibited by this policy. And at the end of Mr. Blanda's email, there's a confidentiality notice that says any unauthorized disclosure, distribution, or forwarding of this message, or its attachments are prohibited. If you put those two things together, this sounds like our kids could be suspended for sharing that email about there being no heat. But we would never. Never? Then codify it. Codify the nevers and won'ts, and you have my word. Because the actions don't line up with the words. This town doesn't trust the administration as it is. And that's something that anybody applying for the new superintendent position needs to hear. So codify it. Because why is this board so scared of writing and amending policy? Because on page eight of the minutes from the policy meeting, as previously discussed, the board will no longer review or approve regulations. But you're being gaslighted because it goes against your own policy in your policy handbook, wherein the policy and regulations start to finish document, it says that a policy or regulation, the draft goes through policy committee and then to the full board. The superintendent telling you that you can have a regulation that doesn't go to the board violates your own policy. Our kids deserve better than an administration continuing the secrecy and silence that has gone on for far too long.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. We don't have any more for public comments, so on that we'll be over to written correspondence.
So I'll go ahead. I'm tired of preparing for the meeting unless you want to.
Thank you.
Do you mind?
No, 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 that's fine. No, you have to take over right now. Totally fine. The written correspondence, the following people have emailed the board since the November 19th meeting. Andy Correa, three emails. Irene Correa, three emails. Matt Grimes. Deborah Kase. And Ryan Reddenis.
All right. All right. On that, move to the written, excuse me, approval of board minutes.
Erin, are you comfortable taking over the motions this meeting, or do you want me to continue them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you mind continuing for this meeting?
No, I don't mind. If you're, yeah, that's fine. I move that the board approve the minutes listed below as recommended. Regular meeting, 11:19:25, and special meeting, 11:25:25.
Any discussion on that, anyone? No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? It's unanimous. All right. On that, we have superintendent's update. Please, thank you.
Good evening. My update this evening will be brief. Traditionally, this is a meeting of celebration and joy to recognize our new members of the executive board and to celebrate those who are exiting their role. And I know that, you know, Rosa has already left the board, and Wendy will remain on the board, but certainly not in an executive role. And Wendy, we appreciate everything that you have offered this board. Again, I've said it before, but having been married to a board chair for many years, it is a difficult role. Heavy as the crown. Thank you for wearing it. Thank you for wearing it, Wendy. And welcome. Just briefly, next meeting, we will be presenting our budget to the board and to the public. It will be a PowerPoint structure that you are used to, and the format will be very similar, where we will present a broad overview and ask you to start to generate questions to us that we can compile. So certainly, I don't expect you to have a lot of questions the first night. It is really a first look. And then you will start to send them, and then Casey and I will develop a document, a growing document, where we compile all of the answers, and everybody can see everything that's asked and everything that's answered. So that will be very exciting for us. I did want to touch on two other topics. I wanted to touch on the weather before Emily does, and I wanted to touch on the all hazards plan, so I know that came up last time. So we did a little bit of research, quite a bit of research, and how this has been managed at the district level, it's been managed in the same way and appropriately for the last several years. Per the DEMHS Region 5 Coordinator and our legal advisor, we confirmed our process. This plan does require several signatures, one of which is the board chair. That is common practice. The plan is developed by the buildings and the district, not the Board of Education. The plan is confidential, and the public is not permitted to view or access it. It should not be available for the public. If it were, we would be compromised. So I just wanted to clarify that. In terms of the weather, we did have our first little tussle with the weather, and I just want to extend gratitude to the team who assisted in ensuring that the day of teaching and learning accord. I want to share how the decisions are made. So Mike Hicks, the Brookfield Highway Department Supervisor, was delightful. He's delightful late at night, he's delightful at 4:20 in the morning. I have not always encountered that, so that is a wonderful, really, sign of gratitude for your district. That's a great thing to have. So I start communicating with Mike the night before. We talked the morning of a couple of times. I joined a conference call at 4:30 with the local superintendents in this area and our weather advisor. I then reconnect with Mike Hicks to confirm, and then I communicate with our central office leads. We are all chatting very early. Lisa, I'm Gramling, Casey, Debbie, and Dan, and Eric. And that pulls the chain of media, buses, food services, custodians, you know, who take care of the sidewalks and things like that. Then we ongoing monitor during the day for any afternoon activities and events and/or early dismissals. And the night before we reopen, I do then reconfirm with Mike, and Casey reconfirms with the custodians, and we check again in the morning to make sure that there's no ice. So there's very little sleep and a lot of checking, because our priorities are safety and learning. We do our best to make informed decisions, and I know that not everybody appreciates or agrees with the decision, and that's okay. So I did just want to share that with you. That is my report.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Vonda, because you said you collaborate with other superintendents. Milford closed, so...
They did.
Did you confirm with...
She was on the call. Gave no inkling. Nobody else, yeah.
Do they give any thoughts, because there's a substantial amount of seniors that leave early? And that was really when it was really...
We were recommended to not even consider closing early because that was in the thick of it.
No, I'm not saying closing early, but consideration for students that leave in the middle of the day. Well, we have a lot of seniors that leave early.
Correct. The, I mean, the considerations are, we make a district call, we worry about safety. There are definitely options for, for students who drive, right? I mean, students who drive, they...
I just think, don't know if 17-year-olds will have the capacity to make that decision if they're not out there, right?
Right. But, I mean, a parent would obviously be helping make that decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of parents don't, wouldn't know, really, have that information if the roads are treacherous, too, I would think. Just some thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. With that, superintendent's search update.
So, school leadership has presented the search committee with several prescreened candidates for interviews, and the search committee will begin interviews this month, and they will continue through January due to the holidays. We're having to break them up a little bit. Caroline Coles has officially joined the search committee as of last week, and Rosa Fernandez has left the committee. Other than that, the updated schedule has been put on the website, so you can see where we're at. And I think the goal is still to, our original schedule was to be able to make an offer by February or March, and we're still on track with that goal.
Good pleasure.
And, yeah, that's where we're at.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Stephanie. Appreciate it. Onto subcommittee reports. Policy and communications?
That's also me.
Go for it. Rock and roll.
Okay. So as you all know, tonight, the student discipline policy, as well as the two final policies that I forgot to put on last agenda, to complete the student handbook, that the goal is to create this district-wide student handbook for the next school year, is on the consent agenda for adoption tonight. This policy has been through the committee, introduced originally on August 20th to the Board of Education for a first read. So all questions from board members, public, and committee members have been asked to the administration. They have been answered to satisfaction of the committee. And as a reminder, the regulation is not part of what the board is voting to adopt because we are voting on the policy, which is the what, and the regulation is the how, and that will be a conversation at the building level led by the superintendent. As we discussed at the last meeting, the policy committee is changing the way it's been operating slightly. The technology policy is the first example of this process. So the interim superintendent and the director of technology met and worked really hard to develop the technology policies for the district. They then brought those to the building principals, and they received their feedback. So what the policy committee is reviewing in a draft form currently is the result of all of that work and collaboration. That includes a review of the current VPS policies, the SNG and the CAE policies that Mr. Conklin, our director, Eric Conklin, our director of technology, has brought to the policy committee. He brought it at the start of the school year to begin the conversation, and he will attend the next policy meeting to answer the committee's questions. So the board has not seen those policies yet. We are still in draft form. Those will be sometime after we meet with Eric.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions, you know? Yeah.
Actually, I had something, it's, I should have asked it earlier, but I didn't. This is connected to the superintendent's update. So the member of the public who brought in allegedly a copy of our hazards plan, she put that down, I believe, in front of you at the meeting, and that's, that's a document that we need to have back. You and I were talking about that.
Yes, we do. I have not received it in my office.
So, do you know where that document is, and if you have it, could you turn it into, Vonda? Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any questions on subcommittee reports? All right. Emily? Hello?
Hello.
How you doing?
I'm doing well. Oh, sorry.
No, you're good.
All right. So the Powderpuff game that we had, even though the date was changed to that Wednesday, it went great. The weather was perfect. It wasn't too cold. And we ended up winning in a close game. It was a lot of fun. It was really great. Oh, yeah. It was, I think the other, Bethel principal had to wear Brookfield gear to school the following, oh, that was awesome. So the student government is planning a winter spirit week as well as a pep rally, and the themes will be like holiday-themed, but very inclusive to all the holidays. I don't know if that was signed off yet, but I know that that's what they're planning to do. So December 16th, the National Honor Society at BHS is hosting a winter workshop for students K through 12 at CLES, where the kids can participate in various activities. It'll be from 3:45 to 5:00, and a flyer should be going out very soon with more information on Parents Square for the CLES parents. Also, on December 16th, as you saw, we have our band and chorus concert at 7:00 p.m., and we made it so that the high school students, like in terms of the winter workshop with NHS, they don't collide because one ends at 5:00 and one starts at 7:00, so they'll have plenty of time to get ready. And I know that you brought it up already, but I would just like to voice the concerns that a lot of junior and seniors have with cars when they drive home. And I know that a few students hydroplaned when they had to leave early from school when the weather was especially bad. And I know that they have the opportunity to stay, but it's very like, they're very, everyone's very eager to get home, of course. And so I just wanted to voice our concerns about Tuesday and the potential threats that the weather causes for students with cars who either have leave early or late arrival, although I know that weather is very unpredictable. The weather app changed so many times, but that, and I know that being in school for a full day is very important and definitely a priority, but just something to put out there that some students were very, sometimes like unsettled, driving home. But it was kind of, it was interesting. Like, everyone was out there, like, getting snow off our cars with the scrapers and everything, but we all made sure, like, text me when you get home safe, but it was just very stressful for a lot of students, but just wanted to say that. All right. I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Emily. All right. So moving on to the consent agenda.
I move that the board approve the items listed on the consent agenda as recommended. Policies. Final read policies, 5131.62 Chemical Health for Student Athletes, policy 5141.25 Food Allergies, and policy 5144 Student Discipline.
Can I make a motion to move 5144 down on the policy, on the agenda? To new business, or old business, or some business, not on the consent agenda?
Why is that? Because we already, we went through the first read process.
Because if you have to vote, I would like to reflect that...
So just make a motion to pull it out?
Yeah. So I make a motion to pull out five, policy 5144 Student Discipline, to speak about later.
Second.
All right. We had a motion and second. Any discussion on the policy?
So I just don't...
We had a motion first. We had a, the original motion was to approve the items. So we have to entertain that first motion.
No, we can, we can, we can do this one first because it's pulling it out.
Because it's part of, yeah, that's, all right.
So if it fails, then we can vote, we'll have, move the original motion, and then... I can rescind the first motion if you want to do it that way.
I don't think we need to because if we, because it would just be, I mean, the motion says approve the items listed on the consent agenda, and if we can pull one out, then it'll still cover the other two. So, can I speak my piece on this?
Absolutely.
Chair? Thank you. So, like, this, maybe some of this is because I am not on the policy committee, and I think I have a stronger understanding than I actually do, but my understanding is that policies come to you guys in draft form, you work through them, then you, once you guys agree, and you work with our admin, and you work with our legal team on them, then when you are ready, you bring them to us, and we have usually 30 days, but in the case of these, we've had months, right? And we, we've read them, we've given feedback, we've talked about them. I don't understand why we can't vote now on it. I mean, it's been months. I don't get it. And plus, we're not voting on the regulations, we're voting on the policy. So, like, I mean, if the majority feels that way, then fine, we'll talk about it next month or next meeting or whatever. But, like, I just feel like we have, we've had a lot of positive movement with policies, and I think that, I think it's worth passing.
Well, and, you know, and I respect your opinion on that, right? But I think, you know, it's a 50-page policy, we're replacing a two-page policy right now, and there are several areas of that policy that I'm still concerned with. So therefore, instead of me voting against three of them, right? We have three policies. I'm asking for it to move so I can support the other two. Because if it fails, they all go back to committee.
So, Rob, ma'am, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate your strategy for that. Absolutely. What I think, so maybe you guys, like, Stephanie...
Maybe I can help clarify.
The policy is only a few pages. The policy's not 50, right?
Policy's, I think, 30.
32 pages.
Okay, yeah. And we've had three months to go through this.
So we have the motion to pull it out. Let's vote and see if it passes, so...
That's fine. Any other comments on it? Any other discussion?
Well, I want to discuss it if we're, if it's not going to pass. Like, I guess that's the issue I have. Like, I'd like to discuss it now. If it's, if it's not going to pass, then we're not going to have, be able to have a discussion.
Well, the first motion is to pull it out, so we just have to first see if it's, like, the first...
All right. That's fine.
We just, we, I mean, we can keep discussing it this way, that's fine, but regardless, we have a motion to pull it out, so...
All right.
If it passes, then it gets pulled out, and we vote on the original motion. If it doesn't pass, then we vote on all three together.
Okay.
Copy. I understand. Okay.
So we can have the discussion now, that's fine, whatever is...
Well, the floor's open. Do you want to say something?
Do you want to keep going?
Yeah, I just, I mean, there's two things that, and just because we brought it to the full board, doesn't, like, just as Stephanie has said in the past, doesn't, I could change my opinion, or I wasn't satisfied with the answers provided at policy. So there was two things that didn't sit well with me. The one was the walkout, and the explanation we got from Mr. Blanda was that he welcomes any student to come and speak with him, and as long as they do it respectfully and whatnot. So if that's the case, which I respect, right, he doesn't want to squash their freedom of speech, or, then why not put that in there? Because in the policy, it says...
So that would go in...
You would get, you would get actions leading to disciplinary action, including removal from class, suspension or expulsion, a walkout or sit-in within a classroom or school building on school grounds. You would get, could get suspended for that or expelled from that if you do that.
I thought that that was part of the regulation, though.
This is the policy.
No, but may I speak to that? Are you, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you.
That's fine. I was going to talk about something else, but...
Well, I was just going to say, so, the, the way that it reads and what we had talked about in the policy meeting is that those are, that's how it's presented in the policy. Those are possibilities, right? We're laying it out for the administration to say, here is, here are the ways that, and the ways you could proceed. It is up to the administration, regardless of what the policy says, to decide how to proceed, right? So our current policy says hardly anything, and it's still up to the administration to decide how to proceed. So what this is doing, and what the, you know, our lawyers, our attorneys at Shipman and Goodwin have presented, is a more robust way of guiding the, both the students, the teachers, the administrators, saying like, here are all the ways in which you should apparently, you know, behave, essentially. And here are all the ways that you can be disciplined. So we're not prescribing any specific discipline. What we are saying is we're providing sort of the framework for the administration, the principals, to go forward. So whether or not we pa, whether or not we have a two-page policy or a 32-page policy, we're not prescribing the actual discipline. And that's where it comes to me, where what this does is it sort of gives, what we've asked for is more accountability, right? More ways in which all of the buildings have, are operating in the same way. And for me, this policy sort of provides that in that it's very clear what we are asking the administrators to look at.
No, and, and I understand that, but we are looking at a 40-something-page document, right? That's left up to interpretation. It's not black and white. I mean, but we have policies in our policy manual as far as student, student cellphone.
So are you just saying we haven't had enough time to look through?
I, I just have hesitated. I looked at Caves all day today, right? Comparing Caves, comparing ours. It just seems it's a lot of legal terms...
Right.
...that we're expecting parents and students to digest.
To send it to the committee?
What? I just, there's just something about it, right? It just...
But we've had it for a period of time.
So we have a cellphone, we have our cellphone policy, right? That is black and white. A student violates, their first violation is X. Their second violation is Y. It, it says what it is, right? So if we want accountability, we want transparency, then we need to be clear on the expectation, and that's what I struggle with.
However, what we talked, and I don't disagree with you, but what we talked about is that has to be at the regulation level because we have three different schools, because we have five, six, seven-year-olds, and we have 14, 15, 16-year-olds. So we can't, in that kind of policy, we, we can't regulate it in that way. And that's where...
So we're expected to adopt policy and hope that the regulation satisfies us.
But that's an anyway.
Well, no, it covers, it's a broad, it covers it.
Yeah.
Covers all the discipline. Leads it up to the principals.
And what this says is, in, in my opinion, this gives us, it allows for more guidance, right? We are giving our administrators more guidance in what we want them to pay attention to. So...
Rob, ma'am?
Yep, yep.
So Erin, I'm, I'm sold on the pulling it out for the reasons that have been brought up, and I do want to just say for the record that when I gave Stephanie feedback in the late summer, I also flagged that item. Because that is, that is problematic, and maybe that is the, the point that we would, that you guys would address, or that we as a board would decide that we didn't want. I don't know. But, but it seems like we do need more time. I just hope that everybody is taking a first read seriously and really investing in scrutinizing the policies that you guys send us.
Well, and continuing to read, like, there's something, you know, I worry about, like, the, the pictures and videotaping, right? So we have kids that videotape on school grounds at Fields, right? We have kids taking pictures of each other at prom, but that's in that policy.
But we asked that question to the superintendent and the administrators, and it was answered. They told us that is not part of...
But it's school property.
The definition and the way that it's stated in policy does not include those activities, and it would not be regulated that. Like, so that's, again, where we have to trust that at the regulation level, that they're going to... So at this point, I feel like...
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, if we should vote to pull it out.
We have a motion on the floor, yeah, absolutely. And it was seconded, right?
Yeah. Seconded by Sarah.
All right. So all in favor of removing policy 5144 Student Discipline from final read?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
One. Abstained, sure.
So what was the final vote on that?
Caroline abstained, and four...
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Two, three, four. I'm sorry.
511.
511.
511.
Good job, Nancy.
Five.
Okay, so now we, the, the only motion that we will, the motion to approve policies, or to approve the consent agenda, will only refer to policy 5131.62 Chemical Health and policy 5141.25 Food Allergies. Second.
Any discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Any nay? Any abstained? One abstention. Okay. We ride along to new business. Board of Education Subcommittee meeting dates and, um, a discussion I would like to, if that's okay, as far as members of the subcommittees.
I, I would like to rescind the motion. I don't think we're ready to do that.
No? Okay.
Wait, we haven't made the motion yet.
I'm sorry, as far as, uh, to, to, for the meeting dates or as far as the members? I'm sorry, did I misunderstand you?
Well, oh.
The meeting dates or the members?
Do you want to read the motion first?
I can. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, first I'm gonna move to add five-one-four-four the student discipline policy to new business.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Any nays? No? All right. It's unanimous. We move to new business. Thank you. Okay, um, Stephanie, uh, recommend the motion for, when you're ready.
Yep, um, I move that the board discuss and approve its subcommittee structure and other board representation. Magnet School, BEF, Education Connection, Brookfield Cares, ARBAK and MBC from January to June twenty-twenty-six.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to table this. I don't think we're ready to have that discussion. That's something that we have offline. Um, so people can give their feedback on what committees they're interested in doing. Cause we, how can we set meeting dates if we don't know what we're serving on?
So Rob as chair, have you-
That's what I was, yeah, I was hoping we could figure that out here, who is going, serving on which committees and then go with the dates, if that's okay?
Yeah.
It's the chairs, um, have you to, to assign?
Liked it. If that's okay with everyone else, I, I figured we can get that out of the way instead of waiting and then I'd love, hope it's all feedback for sure. Okay, um, so for finance, um, and again, I, I, I kinda just mixed names around. The, the, the idea was to give, uh, a new position to, or new, oh, I'm so sorry.
Did no one second it? I missed that, sorry.
All in favor? Aye?
Wait, we don't need, she just seconded it. We're still having discussion, right?
My apologies. Um.
Yeah, we just seconded it. So Wendy seconded, now we're having discussion. So you tell us what you're-
All right, sweet. So I would like to discuss the subcommittee, uh, not only the meetings, but the members. Um, the idea that I had was is that, um, uh, you serve on a new committee that you didn't serve on last year. And of course, I'm open to all feedback if something you don't want to be on, just obviously please let me know. Uh, so for finance, um, I had Joy, Erin and Caroline. I think, uh, I'll start with that. Joy, you have any, I know you're strong in finance. You've been very strong with that in the past. I figure you can lead that charge if you're interested.
No, thank you.
Thank you, the finance, all right. Okay, well then I'll move to, I'll come back to that one then. Would anybody else be interested in leading the finance?
Well, Rob, why don't you tell us what your whole plan was and that, cause otherwise we don't know what we're saying yes and no to.
So, oh, I'm sorry, for the finance committee, for, for, I was gonna call out the members of, uh, that I feel, or, or options, I should say, to-
But I'm saying like, so if Joy says no and you say, does anyone else, like what were your other thoughts and what were the, what was the structure that you wanted to present?
I'll come back to that. Well, I, I honestly, I, I didn't really get, I was kinda leaving it open for, I wanted everyone's opinion before I start really assigning them, if that's all right. Yeah, which I'm okay with that too.
Through the chair?
Sure.
It, it is new to you.
It is. Sorry.
But one of the responsibilities of the chair is to assign committees. You get to do that, period.
Yeah.
It's, it's nice to include if you want to, people's preferences or strengths or interests, um, but you do not have to. You get to assign them.
Interesting, okay.
If you have a structure like that you were interested in, in providing for us, I, I think I'd like to hear it out and see what your thoughts were. But if you are not ready to present that now, then we can table it, but.
The structure that I really had was again, was just kinda moving people on, giving them something new and I, I, my personal beliefs of who's strong where. Like I really do feel Joy's very strong in finance and I thought she, you know, lead the charge with that. So that's kinda like how I thought about it, so.
I would like to hear the rest of what your committee makeups were.
So then for facilities, I have, um, staying on facilities for myself for chair and I, uh, Sarah and, um, either Caroline or Erin. Um, actually that would be Caroline, my apologies, not Erin. Uh, for Cape, uh, Wendy, Sarah and Stephanie. Policy Communication, Joy, Stephanie and Wendy. And the Personnel Negotiations only meets as needed, I believe, which ad hoc. So that, I put Joy, Stephanie and myself on that one.
For which one?
For the Personnel Negotiations, the ad hoc. That was my thinking on it.
What was Finance?
Finance was Joy, Erin and Caroline. Facility was myself, Sarah and Caroline. Cape, Wendy, Sarah and Stephanie. And Policy Communication, Joy, Stephanie and Wendy, leaving the offices for the most part one spot as well.
I personally like the idea of one committee that we're familiar with and one committee new.
Right.
I, I'm, I like the structure. I think it gives everyone a strength. I'm okay with it. Chancellor and something new, gives everyone a strength.
Well, in Finance, really, the structure really should be, the chair should be, um, the Finance. Which is typically the chair of Finance is the chair.
Oh, you're on Cape right now?
That's right. I'm sorry, I got that mixed up. Would you like to stay on?
Would you like to move Finance? Take your space.
Again, through the chair. Rob is ex, that's okay. As ex officio,
Yes.
you can join any committee at any point.
Okay.
Yeah, I hung out in Finance during budget season.
Yeah, sure, I'll be there, yeah, yeah, I'll be there for sure.
Yep.
Okay, um, any other discussion on that? Can we move forward with the dates?
Yeah, so, so I, I don't want to be on Finance.
Okay.
And I've done everything, so it's not the something new model for me.
So I just want to say, I think with this particular structure though, Joy, you could be a real strength. Because if Rob's gonna be ex officio and you lead the charge, like you, your knowledge in Finance and the Finance, the budget process, I think that is unparalleled to the rest of us. So I, I, I don't-
I just think the, the board chair should really be charging that committee.
Well, I think he'll be there, he said he'll be there during budget season, but I don't think, just cause that's the way we've done it before, it should be done this way.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm definitely gonna be there.
I mean, I'm definitely happy to be on policy. I think that's important.
I think they're all important.
Yeah, well, they're all important, yeah. But I wasn't saying that.
But I really do have my strength in Finance. Remember your questions about it and you really do well with that.
No, I appreciate it.
Especially all the questions that you asked as well. On the document, shared document. That was where my thinking was. Remember the shared documents that we did that last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's really where my thinking came from. Love you to be the chair. Or at least a member.
Yeah, because the, the, the members of the committee who are for chair, they're first being corrected.
There you go. Okay.
Sarah, if you've been on this theme, is, maybe you and Erin, you're on-
What are you interested in, Sarah?
You're on, um, Finance. Maybe you and Sarah could switch Finance and-
I'm fine keeping the same two.
Oh, well, there you go.
I mean, I, I would gladly let somebody take Finance, but I think someone needs to sit there.
Well, I also like your idea of only giving the secretary one committee, cause let me tell you.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's a superintendent search. I know, yeah, I know, it's a lot.
So, check, be glad for that.
Someone has to take municipal building too.
Oh, yeah, we can talk about that too after.
Wait, if you, so if you and Sarah switched and she went to Finance and you went to Facilities?
Although Sarah did say she likes her too.
Oh, that's true.
And I actually have a commitment, um, now the, the Tuesday of the month. I'm not kidding.
No, I believe you.
I think it would be a huge benefit, Joy, if you would take the, and then maybe next year, if you hate it, you could, I think of all of us.
Well, I've been on it before.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying though, of all of us, I feel like you would have a, a very strong, you'd be able to present the budget in a very strong way. You'd be able to, you know, lead us through
I agree.
All of the ways, I think that was a good thinking. I think it's intimidating to some of us. I don't feel like you're intimidated by the budget or Finance.
Should we say please?
Pretty please?
Please.
Well, I think here too, um, yeah, but there are a lot of other obligations here.
Well, so going to the, the, um, the representatives, right? I help with BEF, so I can stay on BEF unless someone feels strongly that they want it.
When do they meet? Like this is the problem.
Second Tuesday in the evening.
Uh huh.
Of the second Tuesday of the month, so like next Tuesday, I think is their meeting, is that right? Yeah. Um.
Municipal meeting, municipal building is the third Tuesday.
I also do Brookfield Cares, cause you couldn't do that one, cause they meet at noon and eight AM.
Yeah.
So if someone wants to take over Brookfield Cares, that's been a great organization to be part of. They have a group, a regular meeting at eight AM once a month and then an executive team meeting that, that's what, the one I tend to go do. Cause that's where they ask for feedback and bounce ideas and stuff off. It's, um, noon on this third Wednesday. I'm gonna look up when exactly it is. It is the cares. Can you be available at noon to go on, let's see, it's the Thursday? Nope, Thursday, so the third Thursday at eight AM is their like group call with all forty-five members. And their executive team meeting is Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month. One, two, three, yeah, the third Wednesday of the month at noon. Do you wanna, do you cares? Caroline is kinda such a care, just awesome. All right, so Caroline will do cares. I'll stay BEF just cause I volunteer with them anyway. Who does the Magnet School right now? Does anybody have the Magnet School?
Me, but there's been, there's been very little interaction.
Do you want to stay the Magnet School?
Sure, I can, I can be, look at that, um, interaction.
Um, Education Connection. What is that? Do we have? Is anyone on that one?
Rob.
Me.
Oh, what is it? Oh, well then you can stay on it.
I'll stay on it. I'll figure it out though.
Actually, I'll, I'll take it, cause it has to be a special.
Oh, okay.
Erin?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Education Connection is Erin. Do you know what's not on here that is the youth commission?
Ed Advance is Erin.
It's on the, it's on the, it's, um, on the
Right after MBC.
Oh, I must have, I think, oh, I'm going off the agenda, not the actual, I should probably pull up the actual.
We need a state rep interface.
Oh, that was Rosa, right?
Was, yeah.
Yeah.
You want to be state rep? Yeah. Erin for the state rep.
Erin, are you writing these down? Cause I'm on the wrong paper now.
So.
I'm adding to it, sorry.
Um, Steph, you're staying in cares?
No, Caroline's moving to cares. I can stay at BEF.
And I'll stay, um, with AIS.
And you're gonna take it?
And I'll stay with ARBAK.
You take it, okay.
Okay. Then we have MBC, so, um,
I'll do MBC.
Oh, okay.
That's awesome.
All right.
ARBAK, you're, Wendy, you're that and what, AIS?
Yeah, I'll do AIS and ARBAK and then I might do another one. Okay. So the town facilities ad hoc, Rob, would that be you? Would you have been with for that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, it's an ad hoc.
As necessary, yeah, it's fine. All right.
Who's gonna, who's doing that? You're doing the
I was doing the one.
Who's doing the town board of Finance?
That's the big one.
What is that? Sold.
Okay, are you, well, but-
Cause she's on Finance Committee.
Yeah, I know, but she, will she be able to, Casey, do you go to those meetings?
Town Board of Finance. I, I-
What is that? Sorry, the Town Board of Finance. It's been, okay, so.
Uh, sometimes during the budget season.
During budget season, yes.
With the representative of the Board of Ed, but I, I do not go by myself.
Okay, right.
So this is, this would be great for you to go, but you won't be able to own it yet. You could, like, you might wanna, when I started, Rosa went with me and did most of the talking.
Could you do it with her for the?
Could I? Or Rob?
I don't mind, yeah, I don't mind.
Yeah, so because, I mean,
Yeah, yeah.
You guys gotta get prepped for, um, the, the budget presentation.
Absolutely.
All right, so that's something for you, for Rob and Joy and Caroline to, to figure out together.
Okay.
And I can help out, but I mean.
The ten-year capital planning committee has already scheduled their meetings through January. There's like twenty-seven of them. I'm already scheduled on that. I'm happy to continue unless someone else is super passionate about it. Or you could take over in January, or you could come with me.
I'd interest.
Okay, I'll talk to Brian, cause I feel like we're already like kind of in the process of this one. So maybe starting in January when they start next year's.
Okay.
Hand that over to you.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so I think the only discrepancy we have then is, Joy, you definitely don't want Finance. You wanna, I'll swap it, you'll take Finance. You want Facilities?
Yeah, sure.
Done, okay.
Rob, it's you and me again.
Rock and roll. All right. Onto the, uh, dates now, right?
Yes.
I noticed a, a couple of question marks here. Is that?
So policy, it says at the bottom because it's conflicts with the budget hearing.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Thank you.
Yeah. We can figure those out.
Those can be rescheduled, right?
Yeah, those are the three of us. We can figure that out.
We'll look at it in committee.
Yep.
All right.
I'm, all, all these are good for me.
Policy meeting, we should, we don't have one currently, cause the January meeting is, the December meeting was canceled because of, wait, hold on. Do we have a December meeting?
Seventeen.
Oh, no, it has to be canceled because the winter concert, our kids, the CLS winter concert was, so we could move it earlier.
Can we please move it later, please?
Later. Oh, we have a Florida Ed meeting.
No, 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 I'm not here.
Oh, yeah, after the nineteenth. What about Monday, the twenty-second?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, let's move it to Monday, the twenty-second. So the December policy meeting is gonna move to Monday, the twenty-second.
Um.
I could do like four-thirty.
Sure.
I can do four-thirty.
Yep, I'm on.
Four-thirty PM.
And then, um, where is that? Is that TSO?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Awesome, guys, thank you.
So Rob, we just rescheduled the policy meeting for December and we'll figure out the rest of the dates when we meet.
Okay.
Erin?
Perfect, okay.
You're gonna, would you, would it be you who puts this information in or, or Lisa?
Lisa, so Erin will, I'll, I'll get with you, yeah. Lisa will change it in the district calendar. But Erin, make sure you're making note of it, so that you can have a record of it.
And we still need to reschedule the facilities meeting.
Yes, the facilities we will reschedule, yes. Um, I, I won't do that tonight, but I'll, I'll touch base when we leave tomorrow.
So Facilities is TBD still?
Yes.
It was supposed to be tonight.
It was supposed to be tonight, but I had to do it.
When are you doing Policy?
The twenty-second.
Twenty-second, Monday, the twenty-second at four-thirty PM.
Might be able to do tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I shall not.
Cause our kids are still in school.
That's up to Joy when she wants to do it.
Oh, yeah, I'm not on Facilities anymore, so whenever you guys want to do, it's real easy.
Yeah, up to you guys, that's fine. But the dates for the most part are all set. Second Wednesday, okay, for Cape, Finance. Second Thursday, Facilities, first Wednesday. Are we all, all okay with that?
So just really quick, is there a Cape meeting next Tuesday, Wednesday, second Wednesday?
It's supposed to be, but because we might have the interviews, it's TBD.
Okay, all right, so we'll get it back to that too.
Yeah, so we'll figure out the subcommittees and the dates and I'll give it out, that's for sure, okay.
Okay, well, how do we approve it if we don't actually have dates? Do we just say we're gonna work it out in committee?
Well, this is-
Cause they have to be submitted.
Hold on, this says approve it subcommittee structure and other board representation. We've done that.
Yes, we have done that.
So we can-
But we also have to-
But they have to be changed because of interviews too, so.
Yeah, I don't think, I think we can approve what we've talked about with the caveat that we're gonna work out dates in committee and then all submit them or Erin can submit them to, Erin, you and I can get with Lisa and we have to get everybody's schedule and like, every committee should find, figure out their dates, if they're not gonna, if they're gonna be different, moving forward than what's, yeah.
We had talked about like Finance used to be one thing, moved to another thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the motion is only representing-
Correct. Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Right on.
All right.
Okay, so now we need to vote.
Was it seconded?
Yep, Wendy seconded it.
All right, all in favor of, um, uh, approving the, um, subcommittee structure and the board, uh, representation from January to June twenty-twenty-six? Say aye.
Wendy seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Any of, nays? No?
Any abstentions?
Nah, it's all right. I can do that just fine by myself. I confuse myself very well. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, all right. Yes, I can, yes, I can.
All right.
Um, on to grants approval.
I move that the board approve the attached list of grants as recommended by the Director of Business and Operations, Ms. Casey Diott. Intrum Superintendent, Mrs. Fonda, ten seconds.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the grants? Other than outstanding job, Casey?
Thank you for your professionalism, as always.
Yep. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, all right, unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and, uh, I'm sorry.
Our next, I had moved five-one-four-four to new business.
That's right, you did.
So I move that the board approve policy five-one-four-four for adoption, for a final read and adoption.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Yeah, um, okay. Anyone has anything else to say? Uh, all in?
Oh, sorry, there's one more thing. The other, the other thing that didn't sit well with me was, um, one of the items that you can have disciplinary action for was the use of obscene or profane, profane, profound language or gestures, possession or a display of obscenity or pornographic images or authorized or inappropriate possession and a display of images, pictures or photographs depicting nudity. So, I mean, we have books in this library that have that, so, um, I don't know how we can have that in a policy if we encourage students to read books that have that, so.
Understood. Um, I'm, I'm thinking that, I guess, it does go back one more time if it doesn't pass?
Correct. If it passes, it gets adopted. If it fails, it goes back to committee and we start over.
Okay, um, any other discussion on it? All in favor of, uh, passing five-one-four-four student discipline policy?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, you got it, cool. All right.
So it fails and go back, goes back to the policy committee?
Policy committee, yes. Thank you, Stephanie. All right, um, moving on to old business. There's none. Second public comment, I don't believe there was.
No.
No, there wasn't.
There was none.
Okay, cool. And, um, three main points?
Erin, do you have any thoughts? I wrote, um,
What is your, I'm sorry.
I wrote the superintendent update, the subcommittee structure and the superintendent update.
How about new officers?